Are we on now?
Yes.
Okay. Can everyone out there hear me?
The broadcast is now starting.
Okay, no, I got it.
Maddy, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Maddy?
I'm gonna keep, I'll keep looking for you.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, alright. Sounds like an echo, I don't know why.
Bye.
Why, why, why? Today, 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 none of you old enough will remember this, right?
That will make it a little worse.
Okay. Alright, well, um, good evening, everyone. This Thursday, April 1st. No, this is not an April Fool's joke that we're having a council meeting tonight. It's a real meeting and we're all gonna address some business for this evening. 6:30 PM, and I'm gonna ask everyone here to please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Just a couple administrative things I wanted to share since we're still operating under a COVID-type environment and we do have this meeting where people can attend virtually as well as those that are you who are here. So, participants who are here in person can make comments when we get to public comment components. Submit a comment card. We're very lenient though, if you don't submit a comment card and you do still wanna make a comment, I'll give you a chance to raise your hand. But you're supposed to submit a comment card in advance on the gender item that you're interested in speaking on. Those of you who are attending virtually, you may make a, during public comment, you may join us remotely by raising, by clicking the "Raise Your Hand" option on your GoToWebinar. And if anyone has a question on getting to GoToWebinar, it's on the Royal Palm Beach website dot com slash webmeetings. And with that, Diane, I'm going to ask you to, um, indicate that all members of the council are present.
Yes, Mayor, I will.
And we'll start off with reports. I have a, I guess it's a report, I'd like to, really it's a question for the members of the council. Um, we received an invitation, I don't know if all of you are aware of it, to attend a rededication to the clock, alright? This is the clock that many, many years ago, I was at that original dedication that the Royal Palm Beach Rotary Club donated to the, to the village. There've been some issues with the clock, but I've been told that they had it repaired and that it's working and they'd like to know if we could come there on April 15th at the conclusion of our council meeting to have a re-dedication ceremony. What do you all think about that idea? I'm seeing a head nod, head nod.
Sounds good, is this the one in Veterans Park?
Yeah, it's in Veterans Park.
I'll go back to that, I just realized Selena's not here. Is she online?
No.
Is she on the phone?
I am here.
Okay, I'm sorry, Selena. I told Diane everybody was present and I thought I saw you here.
I'm here, I can see you, but I guess you guys can't see me.
Okay, very good. Anyway, did you hear what I just said about the invitation for the rededication of the clock?
Yes, thank you, and I think that's a great idea.
Okay, so, are we all, you're aboard with that? Alright, so, can we, Diane, can you get back to, I think it's Dan Spleen, to confirm to him that we don't know what the time is going to be because the media can go when the meeting goes, but we've been willing to come over immediately after meeting to, the meeting on the 15th to participate in the rededication of the clock, okay?
Yes, Mayor.
Good. With that, then, Selena, we'll start with you for any reports.
Okay, thank you, good evening, everyone. We had our monthly Recreation Advisory Board meeting, so they are looking to extend the green market through July and the concerts at Commons Park through the summer. So both have been very successful. The green markets are on Saturdays over in front of Village Hall and the concerts are over at Commons Park. We actually did go down to the concert last Friday. It was the, um, the long run, the Eagles cover band. There were about 200 people there, I would estimate, just spread out. It was nice, everyone was well-distanced, um, and I'd like to thank the staff because they went around and supplied everybody with a mask if they saw them walking around without one. So, we are doing that as a village and, and I think it makes it nicer for people to go out and feel safer, uh, for that. We did discuss July 4th that they're gonna have a couple of bands out there, Commons Park and Food Trucks. We are not going to do fireworks this year, uh, but maybe have a live feed from either DC or New York that they talked about. We do have Shakespeare in the Park coming up. They're gonna perform the 12th night, they're gonna do eight shows and they'll start right around mid-August, um, at Commons Park. They are, uh, working on summer camp this year, they are gonna do limited participation as they did last year. And then, um, tomorrow night, they're gonna show, uh, the movie because they alternate between movies and concerts over at Commons Park. So the Angry Birds movie too, more night.
Bless you.
And, and, uh, check and see, if you go to royalpalmbeach.com, all of them are on there. And then, we also attended the flag retirement dedication that is over in Veterans Park. So we had one of our residents, Noah Borges, did it as his Eagle Scout project and we were there for the ribbon cutting that he did. Uh, Councilwoman Ruduski asked him, or invited him for a council meeting to talk a little bit more about the project. So, he will come to a meeting to do that. But what was really great is his older brother did, um, a project for his Eagle Scout that was when you, after you retire the flag, what you do with them. So it's really nice to see is the families continuing that and, and it had something to do with uh, the projects working together in the village. And that completes my report.
Selena, did you say that he was coming to this meeting to update us?
Well, he tried to, uh, Councilwoman Ruduski invited him to this meeting, but he had something that came up tonight, so I did let him know our next one is on the 15th.
Okay, that'd be fine, okay, good, okay. Thank you.
The only thing I have to report on is hopefully this is a step towards normalcy. Um, nothing's steady in stone, but it looks like the, uh, high school, Royal Palm Beach High, is supposed to have their graduation on June the 8th over at the fairgrounds. I'm sure things are gonna be different, they're gonna have in-person. Um, unfortunately, you know, from parents' side, I think we get two tickets per kid, but hey, two tickets is better than nothing and, uh, hopefully they can get all the logistics made out and make everything safe so that the kids can actually walk across the stage. And that's it.
That certainly, if they were able to, to do that and do it safely, obviously, that is a step back to what we used to call normalcy. Okay, anything else?
Good evening. So, believe it or not, we're going into our second year of, uh, food distribution every Wednesday over at Commons Park. Thanks to Feeding South Florida, uh, which, which is a nonprofit that does a great job not only, uh, putting together these, these food pallets that are delivered over there, but also coordinating with us on, on timing and, uh, and of course, if it weren't for our Parks and Rec staff, we wouldn't be able to do what we've been doing for, like I say, a full year now, actually, as it turns out, so at the beginning, or second year.
Doesn't seem like a year, but...
It really, it really doesn't, but unfortunately, you know, we talk about new normal, it's beginning to feel normal to do this on Wednesday and I, I think it's, it is very much needed, very much appreciated. We wind up loading between 600 and 700 cars or pickup trucks with a variety of produce every, every Wednesday. And, um, of course, the families really do need it. I mean, just looking through the windshield, you can, you can see the appreciation and you can see families that are really in need, uh, going through this pandemic period has been really, really difficult. So this is a great thing for us to be doing. We, we, I'm very proud of the, the Parks and Rec folks, they do a great job of organizing this. Uh, if it wasn't for our heavy equipment, we wouldn't be able to move those pallets around and make all of this happen every, every Wednesday. In addition to that, we've kind of opened it up to volunteers, so if any of you all are interested in, in seeing this up close and actually being involved and helping us load a variety of food goods in the back of, uh, 600, 700 vehicles on, on Wednesday morning, just come on over anytime between 7:30 and 8:00 and, um, and you can join in and, and actually, it's a great feeling, it really is, it feels like you're doing something really important and we are for our neighbors in need. Every once in a while, we get some unusual foods, um, and, and this week's food was bison. Now, if, anybody had bison? Okay, pretty good? We're, we're gonna ask next week as they come back through the line again, because we see repeat, folks. Uh, so how was the bison? And, uh, and we'll see if anybody's got a great recipe for it, by the way, and then we'll share it with everyone. Uh, but that was probably one of the most unusual food goods that, that we have had to handle so far. As I say, it's, it's, it's a great thing to be doing, it's really needed and, uh, looking back over the year, doing some rough calculations, we figure we've fed about 35,000 families and have delivered over 2.5 million pounds of food. So, that's a pretty remarkable thing and, and it's something I think we, we all should be proud of. It turned out this week, uh, was unique for two reasons. One, it rained.
Did it?
A lot. And it made it really, uh, uh, hard to predict because it kept raining and then stopping and raining and then stopping. And, um, that made it challenging, but so did, did an opportunity that we had, which we availed ourselves of, uh, and that was, um, a, uh, vaccination pop-up, uh, facility that we located right over by our driving range and tried to make it kind of part of the natural flow of traffic, uh, coming through for the food distribution. And, uh, it was a little challenging at first, uh, but we, we got through the bumps in the road and with a lot of cooperation, a lot of agility on the part of PBSO, who was a tremendous help, uh, and, and the Department of Emergency Management, which I understand is the source of this pop-up, and of course, our Parks and Rec folks. Uh, we were able to put it together and it turned out that by 5:00 that evening, uh, we put 400 shots of Johnson &amp; Johnson and 400 arms. So that's 400 more people that, uh, have, uh, been vaccinated. So, again, it, Wednesday was a good day. It was a, was a really, really good day. I can't believe I walked out of the house without my first edition of the Royal Palm Beach magazine.
I have mine.
Fortunately.
I win, I knew Diane would win one.
My fellow council member over here happens to have one, so I'll let her, I'll, no, you can do your Vanna thing right there. I'll let you talk about it. Alright, well, anyway, I was just gonna say, on, on the cover, uh, and it's an appropriate cover and the main story in the magazine is, uh, our Royal Palm Beach High School Principal, Dr. Jesus Armaz, who, uh, last year was the principal of the year in Palm Beach County. And, uh, that school is, is just full of talent and dedicated people and so that's a great way to kick off this, this, uh, series of magazines and you'll see it every month, as I understand it now, coming out of town prior. For those of you that, uh, have seen the Wellington Magazine, you now have seen the Royal Palm Beach Magazine. So that'll be, that'll be coming. And then, uh, one last thing I wanna mention, uh, speaking of educators, our Education Advisory Board will be conducting the annual interview of scholarship applicants this Saturday from 8:30 until 1:30 in the afternoon. We have 17 applicants we'll be interviewing. That's, it's always, it's always a great experience. The kids are amazing, uh, they are so talented, so poised, uh, and they know what they're doing. They know exactly where they're going and, and whether or not we all agree from our experience point of view, bottom line is, these are amazing kids and it always gives me a, a feeling of, of reassurance that we're gonna be okay going forward, we're in good hands, so. That completes my report.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, they always are very impressive. Good evening, everybody. Free trees, who would like a free tree? So, the Palm Beach County Cooperative Extension Horticulture Program is giving away free native trees um, this weekend. On, um, Saturday, April 3rd, from noon until supplies are gone, you can go on to the website, um, which the, really, the website address is so ridiculously long. Um, all you have to do is search on Palm Beach County Cooperative Extension Horticulture. The only thing you have to do is watch a short video, complete the application, make sure you live in Palm Beach County and, um, as long as you haven't gotten a tree free from there in the last 12 months, you're eligible.
What kind of tree?
Native trees, they didn't have a list.
Oh, okay.
So I think if you go on there, you can...
There's a rock variety, okay.
They're all native, which is, which is good.
You all know that, like, every year, I don't know for 20-something years, we've been, we're, we're Tree City?
Yeah.
So, get your tree.
Yeah.
That's it?
That concludes my report.
Right.
I do have something, I'll, I'll follow up on, on Wednesday, you know, Wednesday, um, didn't get a, a smooth start. Uh, we did have a plan in place, it was, uh, it was put together fairly quickly because the, this was a state site that was, they'd call a pop-up site and, uh, the original intent was, uh, of the site was to offer it to the 600 families that come for the food and, and, uh, and if every, if everything would've started on time, apparently the, the, the people from the state didn't get to, got lost and didn't get to the site on time or went to the wrong site first and so they didn't start really giving vaccines until 10:30, I think. Fortunately, the park is big enough and we had a hundred parking places for people to, to park and wait. The original plan was to have them set up, because we only have one line in and one line out of, of Commons Park and there's no way to make two roads, two roads in and two roads out. So the plan was to, to, to get them started at the same time, start offering it to people in line and then, uh, once we got that flow going, then we would've done kind of a mass, you know, marketing on, on, on all the social medias and, and get it out there and with the goal of getting the 400 vaccines out. The good news is, got 600 families fed and got 400, as, as Councilman and Mayor said, we got 400, uh, vaccines, uh, in people that didn't have the vaccine. So, uh, we had, we have talked to the state, the state originally started their conversations with the Feeding South Florida people. We obviously have their contact information now, they did like the site. So they, they do see the potential of it when, when everything starts on time. So, we hope to have them back, um, we, we will do everything we can to accommodate them.
Absolutely.
And, uh, and the key to, to it working smoothly is starting at the same time, so.
Okay.
Apologize to the residents that, and then, of course, we have to have the rain. I mean, we haven't had rain in...
We haven't had rain in like three, four weeks?
In, in a long, long time, but we happened to have it that morning. But like I said, the good news is 400 people got vaccinated, that's a vaccine and, and, and food they get given out, thanks to all our volunteers and our Parks and Rec Department. So, I just wanted to put that out there. The other thing out there, the, the American Rescue Plan, I know that, you know, there's, it was in the newspaper a couple of weeks ago and cities were getting it. They, there is some basic criteria in the, in the law, but it is basic. We are waiting for the Treasury Department to give us, you know, the rules, um, to, on what the money can be spent for and, uh, so we are waiting for that right now and we do not have specifics on, on what we're gonna, what we can spend it on. Uh, we have general guidelines. So we are kind of putting together our, our budget for this next year and we will have a, a conversation, that's strategic planning as it relates to that and, and, uh, and we'll have more information at that time. But the, the real key is waiting for the Treasury Department to, to write the rules. Uh, the way it's written is we do have until December 31st of 2024, uh, to spend it and we will make sure that, that, that that's not a problem and the goal is met and the money gets out into the, into the economy.
In case everyone was wondering, he's referring to the 17 million plus dollars that were allocated to Royal Palm Beach recently from the, from the government. They allocated funds to all of the cities and that was what was allocated to us and we need to get our arms around what the ground rules are and how do we, you know, what can we apply that toward? So, we don't misspend it and then government comes back to us years later asking for, for it back. So, we're working on that, good. Anything else, Ray?
No, that's it, Mayor, thank you.
Maddy, you're up. You got anything for us?
Nothing specific for you, Mayor, thank you.
Okay.
Nice to be with you all this evening.
Okay. Uh, just one final note on, you know, we had discussions about the vaccine event that we had here, uh, yesterday and, um, we're working on a message, I hope, that we can put out to the, to our citizens to, um, encourage everyone. If you haven't had the opportunity to get your vaccine yet, um, if you hesitate, and I can understand that some people are a little, you know, they got different things they hear and they've read and stories and they're kind of hesitant about getting the vaccine, but I encourage everyone, get the vaccine. Any one of them that you can get, get the vaccine because that's the only way collectively we will get beyond this COVID environment and we won't have to keep walking around with masks sometime in the future. So I just wanna encourage everyone to do that, okay? Alright, that concludes our reports. Um, at this time, is there anyone here who has a petition they'd like to present to the council? No? No petitions?
No.
Okay, I'm closing the floor to petitions now, you had your shot. We're gonna take statements from the public and we, as we normally do, we will take statements from the public on non-agenda items or items, or in this case, item, on the consent agenda. Diane, do we have any advance requests that came in from the public?
Not, except one that I presented to you.
No, I know, I do have one comment card before we get to that, okay. Ray, do you have anyone out there virtually who's raised their hand who would like to make a comment?
I do not, Mayor.
Okay. So with that, I do have a comment card for a non-agenda item, Brian Tuttle, please, to the podium in the rear. I'm so used to saying, please come on down, but now I gotta say, go to the podium back there.
My name is Brian Tuttle and I just did a very, very short update of the Royal Palm Beach.
Not yet, I gotta give you the.
Hit show my screen.
There we are. Okay, just for the public, you know, Tuttle Royale, Main Street, and the Tuttle Royale Project is a live-work center with approximately sixteen hundred homes. It's gonna have a family entertainment center. And I just wanted to go through the significant accomplishments we did last month, last month. Uh, we got the engineering permit for Erica and Luff's Road. That was issued three eight twenty-one. We had a groundbreaking ceremony, three ten twenty-one. DS Ekins began construction on Erica and Muff's Road on three fifteen. They're making great progress. At the Wellington, um, City Village Commission meeting, they approved the mayor to sign the plat on three twenty-three twenty-one. That's great. Uh, the Royal Palm Commission, you guys approved, uh, the city manager to hire the regional traffic, regional planning council to do a study for the corridor and to see how we can work together. Uh, the other thing that's really important is that, um, you know, given that you guys, uh, have, have given your support, I got revitalized, I went out and I closed on, there's two holdouts along Southern Boulevard. They were, uh, the Shaquille property and the, uh, Carruthers property. You know, Chip Carlson would come representing.
You actually got that done?
Yeah. So, I closed on Shaquille, the title is in my name and he is gone and that's done. And we're gonna begin landscaping next week on the, um, Tuttle Boulevard. The, the other thing I wanted to show you here, because I, I know you guys aren't out there every day, so this'll help you see. If you see this map, you see the first little ink mark there? Um, that is the Shaquille property. So it was right at the end of where our plat ended. And it separated us from a three-acre parcel we owned, which was the Hoh- Hammerick property and the Phillips property, the old landscape company. So now we own all the way to the ink, the other ink, and that's the Chip Carlson, uh, Carruthers property. And we've negotiated that contract. So that, those are the two holdouts there and the, uh, other one. And then, um, so what we're hoping to do, um, next month, which is really exciting, and, and this is why it's important for you guys, I feel, is that, um, we're gonna sign the Carruthers contract when I get back with him next Monday or Tuesday. And then, he's gonna be part of the deal and we won't have any more problems with him. Again, with your guys' commitment, I've, um, I'm refinancing the entire commercial pod and getting it prepaid on it so that I'll be able to work with you and break ground next year on it. And I've also signed a, um, deal, so for Pod Two, which will be the apartment site I'm keeping. We've got our lender, an eighty-five million dollar lender that we're signing up on April thirtieth so that we can, uh, begin construction on Pod Two. Um, we need one variance that you'll be seeing, that should be certified next week by TRC. And then it goes to P and Z, the twenty-sixth, and then the variance will be here five twenty. At the next commission meeting. Now, the most important part of everything is the master plat. Um, I thought we needed a special meeting for the master plat, but there's a regular scheduled TRC meeting the twenty-second. So we should have the plat certified April twenty-second. Um, and I wanna, while Midi's on the phone here, engineering had approved the plat about a month, month and a half ago, the actual drawing. But there was all these legal documents. And I wanna say a good thing about Midi, you know? When Jennifer left, Jennifer was one of the best working engineer, uh, city attorneys I'd ever worked with. And I wanna tell you, working with Midi, Midi is, is really, uh, a good person and works and tries to help the, the people. And I just wanna say she's done. So me and her worked together over the last three weeks and we've got all the, uh, uh, legal documents done so that the plat will be totally done. It's like ninety-nine point five, she just wanted to look at it one more time. So we'll believe we'll be certified on the twenty-second. And then Wellington votes on their abandonments on Acme Road. There's some Acme Road in the middle of my project and it's taken me eight months to get them to abandon it. But they have scheduled the abandonment on that, on four twenty-seven. And then the clerk automatically records those abandonments. Ten days before we come to you, I'll be delivering to Chris Marsh a seven-point-six million dollar bond for the improvements. So that's a deal I worked out with Chris. And then the master plat comes to you on five twenty. So that's, that's everything is that plat. And then, you know, I guess you guys record it within a few days. The other key things is next month, the charter school closes. They close five days after we're certified. So that's why it's so important, I get that certification letter April twenty-second. Then the charter school's committed. And then the single-family home site, they close at the same time. So that's just a quick update, you'll see me next month at the commission meeting for the variance and for the plat. And, and I just wanna make sure, you know, I'm, I'm, everyone's as excited as I am. One year from now, my apartments will be under construction. The single-family home sites will be under construction. Charter school should be under construction, if not complete. The Florida Crystal's apartment site, there'll be well over a thousand workers out on this site, building this new center. So it's, it's really building momentum. So I just wanted to thank you and that's it. You have any questions?
Yeah, Brian, thanks for your update. Anyone on council has any questions? Selena? No? Thank you very much for the update. I'm glad to see that we're really starting to move this thing forward.
Thank you again for all your support.
Okay. Oh, we have no other comments from the public? Anyone else like to make a non-agenda item? Going once, going twice? All right, I'm closing public comment on non-agenda items and on item, item, on the consent agenda. And with that, Diane, could you read the consent agenda for us?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Number one, approval of the minutes of the council annual organization meeting of March eighteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Any comments from member on council?
Make a motion to approve, uh, consent agenda item number one.
Second.
Your motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any polls? We have no polls, Diane, please let the record show that the consent agenda item was approved five-zero. Thank you. All right, with that, we're gonna move on to the regular agenda, starting with a, a, a regular agenda item R one, which is a public hearing to consider a variance application two zero dash one three zero. An application by Charles Malillo in variance order VC dash two-one dash zero one. The applicant is seeking a variance to allow a three-foot rear yard pool setback in lieu of the required eight-foot rear yard pool setback in a variance of five feet as required by section two-six dash six-two D, sub D, for a property located at three-one-two-six String Lane. This is a quasi judicial process, Midi, can we have him sworn in?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Um, are the applicants at the podium? Can't yet see them, but I believe they're in person, is that correct?
Yes, they're there now.
They're, they're at the podium.
Okay. Thank you, I need to swear whoever is at the podium in. Can you both raise your right hands? I believe there's two of you, can you raise your right hands for me?
Go up.
Do you swear from the tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, we do.
They said affirmative.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll turn back to the council and ask if there are any ex parte communications that need to be disclosed at this time on this item?
None.
None, just staff for me.
Thank you.
Okay. You're good?
All set, thank you, sir.
All right. We're gonna have a presentation from, from, um, our director for the P and Z. So you can sit while he's doing his presentation, then if you wanna make comments, you have a chance to get back up. Bradford, are you out there? Hello, Bradford?
I have.
Yes, I'm here, I just got there. Um, I'm here now. Uh, can everybody see my screen?
You're on, Bradford.
Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, perfect. Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, the applicant is requesting a variance to allow for a three-foot rear yard setback in lieu of the required eight-foot rear yard setback for a swimming pool. The applicant is seeking a five-foot variance to the rear setback requirements as established in code section twenty-six sixty-two D. The applicant asserts that the reduced setback is necessary in order to allow for a modest-sized pool. Furthermore, Lennar designed the layout of the house and property and quote, "As two recent retirees, we have always dreamed of having a pool. Many of our neighbors are enjoying theirs and they're, and they're enjoying their in-ground pools. And the psychological benefits of daily water exercise would greatly improve our chronic joint and back issues," end quote. The village has sent out the required mail notice to all residents within a three-hundred-foot radius of the subject property, notifying property owners of the variance request. The village has not received in response either supporting or object, objecting to the application. The applicant today provided four letters of support from their next-door neighbors and a, a, a neighbor that is, I believe, on the other side of one of their next-door neighbors, and one from someone who lives across the pond from where they live. Highlighted in blue is a pool setback in relation to the rear property line, as you can see here on this slide. Village Code Section twenty-six thirty-two F six allows for the village council to grant variances to the code when special conditions and circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land, structure, or building involved. We have result from the actions of the applicant. We'll confer on the applicant any special privilege. Little, literal interpretation of the provisions of this division will deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties. That the variance granted is a minimum variance that will make possible reasonable use of the land, be in harmony with the general intent, purpose of this division, will not be injurious to the area involved, detrimental to the public welfare. Village staff is not in support of this variance because staff believes that no special conditions or circumstances exist which are not applicable to other lands. Condition is a result from the actions of the applicant. We'll confer on the applicant's special privileges that are denied to other lands. The minimum variance necessary to allow reasonable use of the property. Planning and zoning commission considered this application on February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one. Recommended denial by a vote of three to two. Commissioners Ray Nazareth and Philip Marquis dissenting. With that being said, Mayor, I'll turn the floor back over to you, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Bradford. At this time, if the applicant would like to make a comment, now would be the time, thank you. Do you have letters? Yeah. Well, no, we have to record, we have to record the proceeding.
I'm sorry, okay.
It's okay.
So, uh, am I to assume you do have the letters that we got of support?
Would you like to submit those letters? Now, what are these, these are letters from your neighbors?
Yes. They're on both sides of us and there's somebody that, uh, behind the, the pond.
Directly across.
Directly crossing the pond supporter.
Okay.
And I think Bradford mentioned those in his report.
Yes, he did. All right. Is there anything else you'd like to share with us?
Yeah, we were, um, kinda blindsided by hardships that the planning and zoning said that we need hardships. Uh, first of all, COVID is a hardship.
I'm sorry, you, you was blindsided because they said you needed hardships?
Some of the, uh, zones.
They asked us whether there are any hardships.
Were there any hardships?
We weren't prepared.
They wanted to know were you suffering a hardship and whether this variance would alleviate the hardship?
Correct.
Okay.
So, the point that we wanted to make is that the rear slope of our property, the many who step off of the night, is, is quite steep. And I have photos that show it.
You wanna submit those, far review?
Sure, um, again, I think. Our granddad started playing out there and the ball went right into the lake, um, you know. It is what it is. We were, when we bought the house, when we were closing, we were all construction outside. We made a point to say, why is ours sloped so badly when everybody else is just like that? Oh, they'll fill it in.
Is this, is this in the Bellicera development?
Yes, it is, it's Lennar.
They never got filled in, it goes like this.
That's all, Lennar itself is a hardship, but that's beside the point.
So, trying to grill out there, you know, we have to prop it up because it's like this. Or sitting in a lawn chair, you're gonna slide down the hill, but, you know, um, and then when we did buy the house, Lennar led us to believe it, when she knows she's putting a pool in the backyard. You spent a half a million dollars on a home. We're from New England, we want the warm sunny weather, we want the pool, you know, we wanna enjoy it. That was one of the things we really wanted when we came down here. Um, so, I mean, that's all, that's all we can say. I mean, we pleaded our case, uh, in order to put a pool in without the variance, we'll end up with a four-foot court pond. And who wants to go through all that expense? You know, it's, it's a very difficult position for us. We're hoping that this eight-month process I've been going through with this variance is gonna be over this evening in our favor.
We'll see, won't we?
We're trying.
Okay. Is there anything else you'd like to share? Okay, thank you very much for your information.
Thank you very much.
No, no, we, we're not done, yeah. Okay, Diane, did we, um, receive any public comments?
No comments received.
All right. Is there anyone out there who wants to make public comment after hand raised? I do not have any public comment cards submitted from anyone here. Is anyone here who'd like to comment on this agenda item? If not, I'm gonna close public comment on agenda item R one and open up the discussion for members on the council. Who wants to go first?
Well, I'll, I'll comment from the point of view of having, um, approached our moving into, uh, Royal Palm Beach kind of the same way. We, not quite as far north as, as where you all came from, but we came from the Washington DC area. Uh, and, um, we were looking forward to a, an environment where we could actually be outside most of the year, if we chose to be. Uh, and, um, and the idea of having a pool was particularly attractive to us. And so, um, we did just that. Uh, actually, uh, our neighbor did the same thing. And generally speaking, we wouldn't have even noticed that our neighbor, uh, had a pool next door, uh, except when he erected a, um, a screen enclosure around it. And, um, all of a sudden, it became, um, a, a, an issue for us because we couldn't, we couldn't see the property that we paid a premium for. I'm guessing you probably get two being on water. Uh, and, uh, and so, um, it was something that, quite frankly, at that time, I was on the council, so I didn't know anything about the code with regard to that kind of thing. So, I don't know whether he was compliant with the code or not. As it turned out, we had a hurricane which took it down as many of, as many of these screen enclosures, um, wound up, uh, coming down and chose not to put it back up. And when he didn't put it back up, it was a totally different world. And so the only reason I tell you this is that I, I, I'm not concerned about in-ground pool uh, and, and a, a small setback variance, uh, as much as I would be if there was a structure that would begin to impede, you know, the ability to be able to enjoy the view, which you pay premiums for and all of that. So I just, kind of as a backdrop to this, uh, I appreciate what you're trying to do. It is great having your own pool, it really is. Even better when you've got grandkids.
Especially when you have grandkids. Anyone else? Selena? Any comments?
Um, I just had a question, I think, and Bradford, this might be for you or Ray to answer. But when, uh, they started doing the lots in this development, didn't they make them deeper so that we wouldn't run into this problem?
That's a Bradford question, if anything.
Ray, yeah, help me out here, Ray.
He just pointed to Ray.
When we came up with the design standards for that neighborhood, we did make all the lots a hundred and twenty feet deep. Uh, most of the lots in that area in Saratoga and, and, uh, Madison Green are a hundred foot. Um, we, we did make these an extra twenty feet. Hopefully, we were, our goal was to avoid this problem. Uh, but Lennar still put a very big, single-story house. Um, and we did even, you know, we, they put a very big, single-story house on this and, and it's really close to the back property line.
Okay.
So then, when, uh, and I don't know with the homeowners, if they were told this is that they have a larger dwelling, so therefore the backyard and what they can do in it is restricted, or limited, I should say, due to the square footage of the home? I don't know if the homeowners can answer that question or not. I mean, I, we don't know what Lennar told them, but if these are larger lots and now we're running into the issue that we tried to avoid?
I'm sure, I'm sure Lennar told them when they were in the process of buying. Do, can we have enough room to put in a pool? Oh, yeah, you've got plenty of room, you can put a pool in. They're shaking their head, yes.
Right, it just depends on the size of the pool. Um, and, and that's also a concern I have is the next step, will there be an enclosure going on it? So this is one variance, now there's another, and considering that there's a whole pod that has not been developed, I, this is my concern, is what's gonna come forward.
Just to.
And those are my comments on the, on it.
To give you the numbers, the required setback is eight feet and the house was placed from the drawing nineteen feet from the property line. So they only left themselves eleven feet from their house to the setback line.
All right. Selena, you have any other comments?
No, I was just wondering, because I, I know that, uh, from what I'm looking at, the, the schematics is that it is only twelve feet wide that they're looking at, and that is the concern. So I guess the question is, is could it be a little bit more narrow? And then, and therefore it's not such an impediment, um, on that. It's gonna be a variance, but, uh, that's the other thing, is, is what's following down, uh, on this particular property? And then what is this game, going to encourage other residents in Bellicera as well?
So you're asking a question?
No, I'm just stating my concerns. You know, first of all, the question could be, is could they make it a little bit more narrow? I understand, you know, the size of the pool, I understand the setback. Um, but my concern is, is this particular property, they're asking for a variance on this one, are we gonna see another variance for the screen enclosure that is now going to go right to the property line?
That's what I thought. Ray, can you explain to us the impact?
Right.
For either you or, or Bradford, if they decided to put in a screen enclosure?
They'd have to come back for variance, right?
Well, they're, they're, they're not, they do not have a request in for a screen enclosure. If the pool is approved and sometime in the future, either them or another property owner wanted to put a screen enclosure in, it would require a variance.
So they'd have to come back through the variance process?
They would have to come back.
Okay.
But that variance would definitely, where the pool is just on the ground and horizontal and with fences and hedges, the neighbors don't see the pool, they're.
Right.
But with, with a screen enclosure, that would be a minimum of ten feet high, um, and three feet from the property line. That would definitely block the views of the adjacent property owners.
Right.
Um, so maybe I was too subtle. Looking down the lake, so. That's what I was getting at.
No, you were.
So that would be one of the, one of the problems with approving a variance with the pool where it is, is if there's a future request for a screen enclosure. Because this, you could not do it without a variance for the screen enclosure and without blocking the view of the lake from the residents, from the adjacent residents.
I have a question for Midi then, based on what, what the village manager just shared with us. Uh, is there an option, uh, Midi, for us to, if we provided a conditional approval this evening? And the condition being that, yes, they could get the variance to put the pool in place and ground, but the condition is they could not put up a screen in the future?
Yes, Mayor, you can, this is a quasi judicial hearing, so you can impose conditions. They do have to be reasonably related to and proportional with the requests being made. But given your concerns, that, that certainly sounds reasonable, so you could condition, uh, your approval tonight.
Okay.
I have a question about.
Sure, go ahead, John.
Whether it be a fence or bushes, do we not have a, something in the code that requires the pool to be blocked from kids?
There is a requirement, the pool has to be enclosed. They, they would have to put a fence up on their property line.
You're gonna wanna do that.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, they would.
So, so does, does that fence, almost like an enclosure, require another variance later?
No, because the fence would be along their property line. Which is.
Yes. That's correct.
But the, but the placement of, 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 of something that goes vertical, okay, as the enclosure would, becomes problematic.
Yeah.
And yes, it would require an additional variance. So, I guess the question, any other comments or pose the question?
I would just echo what, uh, Jeff and Selena said. I mean, and, in my opinion, um, yeah, applicant brought up the point. I mean, I'm looking at the picture here, it does look kind of difficult with that, that slope you were talking about. I'm glad you did bring the picture, because that really lets us see, um, you know, what you're looking at. But I also, you know, share as, uh, Jeff pointed out, that you've got, and it might not be, you know, both of your neighbors might say, okay, it's perfectly fine, but they might not live there forever. And people down the line will say, oh, well, he got one, so why don't I get it? And there could be fighting with neighbors. So I guess where I'm sitting at, I don't have an issue with the, with the pool variance. Um, but building up, I guess, is, is my concern, like.
Okay.
The other ones we've heard.
So I guess my question to the applicant is, would you be, uh, agreeable if we gave you the variance to put the pool in the ground, but gave you a condition of approval that says you cannot put up a screen? A screen enclosure, yes.
Right.
Well, I. Okay. Because if you did, you'd be back here. And I would tell you the likelihood of getting that through. So we're trying to accommodate you as best we can at this, this moment in time. All right, so Diane, let the record show that the applicant indicated they would be agreeable to accepting that condition of approval if it's approved, all right? With that said, if there are any other comments or questions from members on council? If not, I'll look for a motion of approval with the condition.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, regular agenda item R one, uh, with the condition as stated.
Midi, is that stated properly?
Yes, sir, that's fine.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any appeals? We have no poll, Diane. Let the record show that the, uh, applicant's request was approved, uh, five-zero with the condition of no, no screen enclosure. Good luck and congratulations. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Is. Is there, um, some way that we can, uh, get word to Bellicera residents so that those coming in the future, that they're aware of the requirements? Or depending on if there are other lots with homes with this square footage, that this is gonna be a concern or an issue? Or to take into consideration?
Uh, I don't, I don't really know, because to do that, if, we would be presupposing that these, the residents are gonna be making these requests. We really don't know that. Uh, it's.
Right.
The other thing, we, we don't wanna get in the middle of the, the people who are buying these new properties here and the, and the developer, the builder, so.
I understand that, if, if so, you know.
It, it, we'll have to address them if, if and when they come up before, before the council.
All right, so potential residents are aware of it. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. With that, we'll move on to item, regular agenda item R two, which is also a public hearing to consider a variance application two zero dash one three three. An application by Claudia Allison in a variance order VC dash two-one dash zero two. The applicant is seeking a variance to allow a seven-foot rear and side yard pool setback in lieu of the required thirteen-foot rear and side yard setback, pool setback as required by section two-six dash six-two sub D for a property located at one oh-four Hemingway Court. This is a quasi judicial, uh, process, and I'm gonna ask Midi to swear in those who want to participate.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, if the applicants are at the podium, I need to swear them in. Are they at the podium, sir?
They're going to the podium. They are behind the podium now.
Perfect. Uh, if both of you could raise your right hands for me, I need to swear you in. Do you swear from the tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
They both said affirmative, yes.
Thank you, sir. I'll turn back to the council and ask if there are any ex parte communications with regard to this application.
Just staff for me.
Just staff.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I spoke with staff.
Thank you, ma'am.
You may be seated, we're gonna have a presentation now from, from Bradford, and then you'll get your opportunity if you would like to comment.
Thank you again, everyone. Thank you again, everyone. Uh, can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. The applicant is requesting a variance.
Bradford, you have the R one up, you need to pull up R two.
Oh, okay, I'll need advance.
I was gonna say, that looks like.
There we go. It was the same one.
And if you could speak a little more closely to the microphone.
Turn up the volume a little bit, Bradford.
Yeah, please.
Okay. Is this helping?
That's better.
Okay. The applicant is requesting a variance to allow for a seven-foot rear and seven-foot side yard setback in lieu of the required thirteen-foot rear and side yard setbacks required by village code for a swimming pool. Highlighted in blue is a pool setback in relation to the rear property line. The applicant is. The applicant asserts that the existing conditions include a thirteen foot rear and side setbacks, which prohibit a common sized swimming pool on my property. We purchased the property as is and have made no alterca- alterations or additions other than a wood fence, small paper patio and widening of the driveway. We ask, we are asking for a variance to add a swimming pool because we love the neighborhood. It will only provide a means to construct a normal sized swimming pool and hope a similar request have been reviewed and granted. End quote. The village sent out the required mail notice to all residents within three hundred foot radius of the subject property, notified homeowners of the variance request. The village did not receive any response, either supporting or objecting to the application. In addition, no letters to date have been provided by the applicant supporting the request. Village Code Section twenty six thirty two F6 allows the village council to grant variances to the code. When special conditions and circumstances exist, do not result from the actions of the applicant, will not confer on the applicant any special privilege. A literal interpretation of the provisions of this division would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties. Uh, the variance granted is a minimum variance that will make possible the reasonable use of the land, will be in harmony with the general intent purpose of this, of village code, will not be injurious to the area involved detrimental to the public wealth, welfare. Village staff is not in support of this variance because staff believes that no special conditions or circumstances exist which are not applicable to other lands, will confer on the applicant's special privileges that are denied to other lands and literal interpretation of the code, um, does not deprive the applicant of rights enjoyed by other lands in the same zoning district. It is not the minimum variance necessary to allow reasonable use of the property. The planning and zoning commission considered this application on February twenty third, two thousand and twenty one and recommended denial by a vote of four to one with Commissioner Ray Nazareth dissenting. With that being said, Mayor, I'll turn the floor back over to you. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Bradford. Now, if the applicants would like to make comments, you may.
So I have a couple photos I'd like to send you, as well as a signed, signed document by one of the neighbors. Two of our pictures of our backyard I just took today and just kind of highlighted where we're planning on putting the pool if we can. People within the three hundred foot radius were all sent letters. I, I know, we've lived there over twenty years, so I know a lot of people.
You lived there for twenty years?
Twenty years.
Why are you just now getting around to getting the pool?
You know, we, twenty years ago, we didn't make that kind of money.
That's a good answer.
Our son has grown up, uh, and-
He's the responsible fiscally, Fred, that's why.
So, yeah, so we just, we want to put a pool in, you know, we're starting to wind down and, you know, looking to stay there until retirement.
Sure.
The pictures I have have a, have a, we have a six foot wood fence all the way around it. Personally went to the neighbors directly behind us and beside us. We weren't able to get a response. We went there several times. It's kind of peculiar right now because we have three houses that are completely empty. People have passed away and such. So I sent, I sent them letters with a self addressed, uh, return envelope, asking if they had any concerns or questions and to, uh, if, if they wouldn't mind signing something saying such, but we didn't get any responses, so. That's, that's kind of where we are. Nobody seems to really care or even know about a thirteen foot setback. Still, if we, we can put the edge of the pool at the seven foot setback we're requesting, that still leaves seven between the fence and the pool. And we have no intention of putting a screen enclosure around the pool.
You have no intention of putting a screen enclosure?
I have no problem if you put that in.
Okay. All right, thank you. Before I go to council or comments, um, Diane, do we have any-
No public comments.
No public comments sent in advance? Ray, does anyone have their hand up?
No.
I do not have any comment cards submitted on agenda item R2, but if there's anyone here who would like to comment, now would be the time. Seeing none, then I'm going to close public comment for agenda item R2 and open up for questions and comments from council. No, no questions?
Uh, I guess, I can, I have a, I think from reviewing this, um, proposal is because it's the size of the pool and the additional jacuzzi on that, that the variance is required. So I think i- if, looking at it is that if they were to shift the placement of the pool and the size of it slightly, that a variance would not be needed. So I think that was my, my question to the homeowners is, is that a consideration so that we don't have to go through this process?
You're going to the podium.
Thanks.
So, yeah, we, we, we played around with the design several times and we could not get anything to work where you wouldn't be building right up against the house at some point. We have kind of an L-shaped backyard, the house is. I, I worked for a structural engineer and his comments were not to dig any closer than the house than a forty five degree angle. So if you're putting a six foot deep pool in, you want to stay at least six feet away from the house. I gave a little bit more of a buffer because I know they have to dig farther than six feet. Uh, or, or wherever the edge of the pool is, they have to dig farther in order to frame it, so. I'm just trying to keep it from, you know, sinking the house. But even then, um, the thirteen foot setback, I probably would only be able to build a pool about eight feet wide or seven feet wide. It just doesn't make any sense to spend that kind of money.
You're saying the, you're under the impression the pool would have to be eight feet wide?
No, no, I'm saying wi- without the variance, I would only be able to build about eight foot wide pool. Unless I, unless I put the pool right against my house and I probably would have to hire people to shore up stuff and-
Okay, that's okay. That's interesting because I got different information about that. Ray, can you comment on this, this, this?
Yes, Mayor. The, the request, let's look at the, the, the larger distance, the rear setback. Um, on the rear setback, the request is for a six foot variance from the thirteen feet. The pool is, there's a ten foot covered patio and then there's a ten foot concrete deck area. If you did a fourteen foot pool and had five feet from the edge of the covered patio to the pool, you would not need a variance for the side. You could have thirteen, or from the rear, you could have a thirteen foot rear setback, a fourteen foot wide pool and have it five feet from the covered patio. So it would be a five foot walkway. That is very common in pools that are built in Royal Palm Beach.
So it would be fourteen foot wide, how long would it be?
Well, that, that's, I'm just dealing with the, the rear setback right now. So he can be, it can be fourteen feet wide, which is a very common pool, and be five feet from the, from the house. And it'd be thirteen. On the, on the side yard setback, he could have a twenty five foot, ten inch long pool and have it four feet from his house. Now, if he wanted to match the same five feet that he has on the, on the covered patio side, then he would have to reduce his pool to twenty seven feet. And he, but he would need a two foot, ten inch variance for, a two foot, two inch variance to do that. The good news about that is it would put it inside the ten foot setback of the house and if a future property owner wanted to put a screen up, it would not require a variance. But he could put a twenty five foot, ten inch pool, have it four feet from the house, which is close and the structural engineers do recommend that, that forty five degrees. So that's the, where he's entering the pool, he's got steps on that side, so it's probably three and a half feet deep. So he could be, he could be four feet, five feet away from that without, without any problem, uh, which is pretty common. We have many pools that are put five feet from the edge of homes. So if he were to do it five feet from his covered patio, five feet from his, from the corner of his house, he could get a, a two foot, two inch variance, he could get a fourteen foot by twenty seven foot pool in which fourteen by twenty eight is a pretty common sized pool too. He's got a fifteen by thirty, which is, well, what we're, what we get around here with most of our lots, that's a large pool. So.
All right, so potentially then a fourteen by twenty seven foot pool.
Gives him five feet around the pool to, to the-
And then the variance request is reduced to two feet.
Two feet, two inches.
Two inches. Now, this is- I'm sorry, go ahead.
Real quick, and, and, um, Ray, as you were talking though, you're referring to the covered patio area. So it's not the structure of the home, but then there's a covered patio attached to the edge of the home prior to the, the area that they want to construct the pool, correct?
Correct. The edge of the home would be another ten feet.
So they are that just from the, the home structure itself, it's the covered patio area that they're going to be five feet from or six feet from?
Correct. They would be fifteen feet from the house if you, if, if they, if they put it at five foot, which like I said, is, is pretty common.
Okay, so structurally, it's not affecting the house. That's, that was my question. Thank you.
Yep, and just remember, if I understood correctly, it operates the need for variance if in fact they do at some point want to put the, the screening in. Is that correct?
Thank you.
It does.
Okay. Um-
Can I comment?
Please, I was going to ask.
So I'm, I'm not a structural engineer, but if, if you put the edge of the pool five feet from the structure of the house, they're going to have to dig farther closer to the house in order to frame the walls of the pool and the gun ice and the rebar. But really, there's no way you can, you can do that without shoring the house though. In case there's a, you could dig in three feet from the structure. You've got a, uh, column and footing at the corner of the covered patio that supports the roof structure. So I, I just don't, I, I understand there's a lot of houses that have that and we have some in our neighborhoods.
The way your house, yeah, but the way, you're L-shaped. I've seen a lot of screens put up in L shape where they, it's, it becomes part of the house, the screen, and it just extends from there.
Yeah, but I'm, but I'm not interested in that.
All right, that's fine. Like, I, 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 so your point is what then? You don't think a fourteen by twenty seven foot pool is going to work for you?
No, that, no, that is absolutely fine. Um, I don't think I could build it that close to the house without some major structural, um-
How, how far would you want to be?
Well, I had it ten feet on here from the house because I didn't want to walk out the door.
Right, how would that, how would that work?
He has it five feet, ten inches away from his house on the, at, at the corner and he has it twenty feet away from his house from the screen enclosure.
No, that's not, I'm sorry, that's not correct. It's ten feet away from the house. The covered patio is the structure.
The, the covered patio does have a footer around it, but it, it's not the footer of the concrete block wall. But he is five feet, ten inches away from his house on the, uh, on the, on the corner of the house there. And if, I was just reducing that to five feet and then reducing it from the pool to the covered patio footer, five feet, then he would only need the two foot, two inch variance with a fourteen by twenty seven foot pool.
I, I don't think they could build it five feet from the house.
Yes, they can. Yes.
Can I share?
Please do.
Yeah, can I, sorry, I keep on-
So just, just to address your comment about not building it, we've been in our house for eighteen years. We got five foot between our sliding glass doors at the back of our house and our pool. And I'll tell you, you don't want to get stepping out that door real aggressively because you can wind up in the pool. But insofar as the structural impact is concerned, it, it, it worked and it was a matter of trying to make the size pool that we wanted fit as much as we could. I would have loved to have had ten foot between the house and the pool. I really would have. We, we, we couldn't do that, uh, and, uh, without a variance. And, and so we, we chose to accept the five feet. We've been living like that for eighteen years and-
Can I ask you something? Um, did you put the pool in after the house was already built?
Yes. Yep.
Cause I, I, that's why I was having a hard time understanding if they could actually do that.
Yeah, e- e- exactly. I mean, we had the option with, with Minto over at Madison Green to, to do that as part of, of the structure. We chose not to do that. We didn't like the pools they had to offer, so we waited till the house was constructed. And then we went out and, and built the pool.
I guess I don't have any other comments, then I-
All right, well, I, okay, so here's what I think where we are with this. If we don't approve your variance request tonight, you're back at square one, okay? I think what we're proposing is, uh, to grant you the two foot, the two foot, two inch variance if you made the pool, s- downsized the pool to a, a fourteen by twenty seven foot size pool. I think that's what we're formulating as would be the basis of our approval if we made an approval this evening. So we wouldn't, I wouldn't put that forth if you're not agreeable to that. And if you're not agreeable to that, I don't see the variance getting any approval tonight at all.
I just want to make sure I understand which option you guys were offering because, um, you're talking about the side setback being, um, two, two foot something, is that from the side?
We're saying, we're saying with the, with the reconfiguration of the size to a fourteen by twenty seven, we still would have to grant a variance, but the variance is very much reduced to two feet, two inches.
Is that on the side and the rear?
Yes, on the side, side only.
But what about the rear?
Nothing needed on the rear to do a fourteen foot pool and have it five feet away from your patio.
Okay. Okay, we would probably accept that.
That's acceptable?
Yep.
Okay. Um, Mehdi, is that, uh, appropriate way to fr- to, to frame this approval? I guess it's, is this a conditional approval?
No, so Mayor, you, you, we've advertised for the requested seven foot, uh, setbacks on each side. So you, the council could approve a lesser setback, both rear and side tonight. You just can't grant more than we've advertised for tonight. So if, if you're granting something less than the, you know, seventeen on each side, that would be more than appropriate. If the maker of the motion could just formulate that as part of the motion, uh, that would be helpful.
Okay. Diane, let the record show that the applicants have indicated they were agreeable to that, that, uh, proposal. And I guess if there's no other questions or comments, can I get a motion that defines the size of the pool and what the variance is that we're approving?
I just, Mr. Mayor, I do have a question.
Go ahead.
Is, when, when we're referring to the pool, there are, they're showing on the, um, illustration that there's also a hot tub. So is it, are we including that in that? We're not just talking about the pool itself, so I just wanted to make sure I understood. Does that include the entire request?
Yes, the hot tub would have to be out of the setback, would have to be the approval tonight, yes.
So is that okay with the homeowner that they, they'll do the hot tub and the pool based on the size?
Did you hear that question? Go ahead, Ray, can you repeat the question?
She was wanting to make sure that you understood that included your spa too, that, that the spa wasn't getting a different setback.
Oh, yes, um, it's actually in line with the pool.
Right.
Yes, I thought it was integrated.
Well, that's what I thought it was. It's part of the-
Right.
It is.
Selena is just being specific to make sure it was all in there.
I just don't reach-
I got what she was thinking.
That's all, it's all included in that, so you still get everything you want. Okay, thank you.
All right, so you're still, you're still in agreement? Okay. All right, any other questions for members on council? Can I get a motion in that specifies the, the pool size and the actual, um, variance that we are approving, the two feet point, two inches?
Could we get ready to kind of state what we, I, I missed the variance part of that.
What you would be doing is appro- approving a two foot, two inch side yard setback for the pool edge.
We have to state the size of the pool though?
No, you don't because he can, he can make the pool whatever he wants as long as it's within the thirteen foot rear and the two foot, two, and the, and the-
Okay, that's even better.
And the ten foot, ten inch side yard would be his new, he gets a two foot, two inch variance, which gives him a ten foot, ten inch side yard setback on his pool edge.
So he can make it narrower or longer?
Yeah, he can, yeah, they can do that.
Okay.
Or they can go, he can go, instead of five feet, use four feet and make it fifteen by twenty eight.
All right, so that's, you're saying that's the way we should set the motion then, based on the variance?
That you're granting a two foot, two inch side yard setback, reducing the, reducing the side yard, side yard setback to ten feet, ten inches.
You got that? Okay.
I thought I had it up to the-
Let the record show, the, the village manager has just stated the specifics of the variance. So I'll look for a motion, all right, for approval of the, of the stated variance as indicated by the village manager, which is now on the record.
So moved. I will make that motion.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second as read into the record by the village manager. All in favor?
Aye.
Any appeals? We have no appeals. Diane, please let the record show that the variance of two point two, two feet, two inches as read into the record by the village manager was approved, five zero. Good luck and enjoy. Thank you. Okay, agenda item R- Okay, Agenda Item R3 is a public hearing to consider application number two zero dash one three six, an application by Marcos Yunus, an adoption of resolution number two one dash zero two confirming counsel's action. The applicant is seeking a special exception use approval for veterinarian clinic with outside run, not sure what that means, on approximately thirty-eight point eight-nine acre parcel of land located at one zero four six five, Southern Boulevard. This is a quasi judicial matter, and therefore, Maddy, I need you to swear in the participants.
Thank you, sir. I think there are a few folks who will be approaching the podium. If you could let me know when they get there.
Please get behind the podium. Thank you.
And since these are not homeowners, if you could have them at some point state their names, but if all of them could raise their right hands for me, do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes. Are you affirmative to the affirmative?
Thank you, sir. And I'll turn back to the council and ask if there are any ex parte communications on this item that need to be disclosed at this time?
None.
No.
The staff, I spoke with staff.
Thank you.
Okay, you may be seated while I have the presentation. You'll have a chance to comment after that. With that, Bradford, you're on.
Thank you, sir. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. The applicant seeking a special exception use approval to allow for a twenty thousand four hundred eleven square foot veterinarian's clinic with outside run on a thirty-eight point eight-nine acre parcel of land situated within the southern shop on four forty-one. The veterinarian's clinic with outside run is a special exception use within the general commercial zoning district. In reviewing this petition, village staff considered conformity with the Villarreal Palm Beach Code of Ordinances, special exception applications specifically. Is it consistent with the standards of the village's comprehensive plan, complies with all applicable development regulations of the village code, does not have adverse environmental impacts, does not have adverse vehicle or pedestrian traffic impact, does not have an adverse impact upon public facilities, does not have adverse impacts on adjacent properties, is compatible with the character and living conditions of the existing neighborhood, does not have an adverse impact on property values in adjacent areas, not a deterrent to the improvement or development of adjacent properties, would not seriously reduce the quality or quantity of light air available to adjacent properties? The Planning and Zoning Commission heard this application at their meeting in February and voted to approve this application by a vote of five to zero. Staff is recommending approval of this application. Just to clarify, Mayor, the dog run is what is considered the area that is typically fenced in with the facility of this nature, where they can walk the dogs in a safe environment that's probably had a chain link fence or something of that nature. A veterinarian's clinic within the general commercial zoning district is allowed by right, but when they add the dog run, it just has, it just needs that additional level of scrutiny, or I shouldn't say scrutiny, but we just got to look at it a little bit more closely. And with that being said, Mayor, I'll turn the floor back over to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Love to hear from the applicants. Please tell us about this place.
I'm Dr. Marcos Yunus. I'm one of the surgeons and owners of the facility, but it's a twenty-four-hour specialty referral hospital, so we have surgeons, criticalists, internal medicine specialists, cardiologists, just, you know, same as a human hospital. So we're not a boarding facility or anything like that. What we're asking for is just a small enclosed area so that we can walk the patients outside, and they would never be outside by themselves, it's always with a nurse, and most of these patients are sick and require assistance, you know, walking around. But I have many colleagues that don't have enclosed areas where dogs have escaped and got, you know, hit by cars in the street, so we just wanted a protected area. And it would actually be PVC privacy fencing, not chain link, so that, you know, the clients couldn't see in there from the parking lot. So it's a secluded area, so there's nice shade trees right there, so we wouldn't be changing, you know, the landscape, only putting down some astroturf instead of the mulch that's there, but it would really, you know, make it a safer place for our patients to walk.
Are you open and operating already, or this is...
Monday, we're actually going to have a soft opening.
You're going to open your doors?
Yeah, so we're seeing referrals only, and then hopefully by April fifteenth, we'll open twenty-four-seven. We've already visited a lot of the local vets, and they're pretty excited about having a closer twenty-four-hour referral facility, because right now they're having to send clients pretty far away.
So let me see if I got this right. So different vets would refer their patients to you because there's some advanced surgery type protocol that needs to be implemented?
Yes. I'm one of the only surgeons in South Florida that's...
Like we do that for humans. That's wonderful.
We have a CAT scan, MRI, so we've got a state-of-the-art facility here. We'll also be a teaching center for nurses, and we have veterinary students coming through and shadowing us there, so it's going to be a teaching facility as well.
Okay. If you have any other comments, you, okay, thank you. You can take your seat. Diane, do we have any public comments in advance on this agenda item?
No public comments.
No? Ray, do we have anyone with their hand raised to make a public comment on Agenda Item R3?
No, Mayor.
Okay. I have no comment cards submitted to me on Agenda Item R3, but if anybody is here would like to comment, now would be the time. I'm surprised we don't have any dog lovers here tonight. That's okay, I'm sure they're out there. Okay, with that, then I'm going to close public comment on Agenda Item R3 and open up for members on counsel if they have any comments or thoughts.
I'd just like to thank you for coming to the community. I know not only is this a service that's going to be helpful to pet owners, but that particular location that you're in, I live on the south part of town, and that is a very difficult place. I've seen too many businesses go in and out of that plaza, and I'm hoping you being there is going to be a good draw and maybe get some more other people to come in, because it's seen better years, so hopefully you'll be a good asset to that complex and to the community. But thank you for being here, and I look forward to seeing you prosper. Thank you.
Okay. Selena, any...
I just had a question, just for clarification, we're, they're just asking for a special exception approval for the outside run area. It is not, we're not voting on specifically where on the site that it'll be, because I heard the applicant describe an area, and I just wanted to make sure this is just for the, allow the outside run, not a specific location.
They're going to the podium to try to answer your question.
Thanks.
Good evening. Manny Gutierrez, Gutierrez Allozano Architects, I'm the architect for Dr. Yunus in advance of Specialty Animal Hospital. So yes, the area is already being defined and reviewed by staff.
Right.
And it was reviewed and approved by the Planning and Zoning also. So it's not open in the air, we are showing it in a specific area.
No, it has been submitted for a site plan modification, a minor site plan modification in that location, and we have informed the applicant at that location, they will need a variance to our village code that, because there is a sidewalk that goes from the rear of the building to the front of the building, and whenever you're using parking, I'll be in the rear of the building, you have to have a sidewalk, and they will be severing that sidewalk. So at its current location where they're proposing, it will need a variance.
And, Mr. Mayor, this is Mitty. If I could jump in just to address Councilman Samuel's point, this is just the use approval tonight. This is a special exception approval, so you are just approving the veterinary clinic with the dog run tonight, so it's strictly a use approval tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Mitty. Thanks. Thank you, Bradford.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments, members on counsel? All right, seeing none, then, I'll look for a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
I make a motion to approve regular agenda item number three.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that Agenda Item R3 was approved five-zero. We welcome you to the village and all of our dog lovers here, you know, it's unfortunate that they need your service.
You do cats, too?
Right.
Okay.
Great.
Good luck.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Welcome to the community.
I see you came back. If you have some questions, if you can wait after the meeting, you can talk directly with the village manager. I'm sure you get a question for your questions, okay? Okay, moving forward, Agenda Item R4 is appointment of two residents to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I think Jen, that would be you?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to reappoint June Perrin and Rose Nazareth to regular seats for another three-year term expiring in March twenty twenty-four.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that Agenda Item R4 appointment was approved five-zero. Agenda Item R5 is an appointment of six residents to the Recreation Advisory Council Board. And Selena, how do you want, is that the whole board?
With six, I know, you know, and we have two that expire next year, so I need to talk to Lou about that, how we manage that there's that...
There should be some, yeah.
Yeah, it's not, it's a little like this, then like this. But the good news is, is everybody wanted to be reappointed again, and we didn't have any new applicants, so it makes it easy for me. So I would like to make a motion to reappoint Carlton Brooks, John Ruffa, Phyllis Katz, Dennis Seibert, and John Roridian as, on the regular seat. And I would like to also have Leslie Salas Leffler reappointed as the alternate.
Okay.
I'll second.
You have a motion?
Second.
You got a second. She made the motion. It's late, Ray. Okay, we have a motion in a second.
We're winding it all together.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that Agenda Item R5, appointment of six residents to the Rec Board, was approved five-zero.
Thank you.
Okay. And Agenda Item R6 is an appointment of three residents to the Education Advisory Board.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to reappoint three sitting members on the Education Advisory Board for two-year terms expiring in March, and those three individuals are Crystal Clark, Julie Highsmith, and Bill Talimer.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that regular Agenda Item Six, appointment of three residents to the Education Advisory Board was approved five-zero. With that, we have no other items on our agenda. Our next meeting is April fifteenth. Is that still a tax day? They didn't change that?
Aye.
They did change it?
Aye.
They moved it to, oh.
But check the state. Did the state change it also? Federal, they had to make fifteenth, but I thought states were still keeping it April.